Yeah, good, good starting point, yes.
And then to kind of piggyback on Mr. Collins, you had to leave on a meeting. And we stayed, we stayed talking a little while long on Mr. Martin. He, he said to me the stuff that I want the board to consider, he said, and he gave me a sample, he said, I truly believe in a timber deed. And I guess that's pretty much the deed between the us and the person cutting the timber. He says, that's, that's, that's very safe. Anyway, so he gave me a sample. And so what I'm thinking, what I was hoping to do, just put it in your board packages next go around it. And on the informational items, if you see something sticks out at you, holler at me or somebody. He's been, it's legal, he's already had a lawyer look at it. And he's been utilizing this through his career, so.
The request for proposal for auctioneer for not away lanes ends tomorrow. I've had four inquiries on it and three showings. And I'm supposed to get another one tomorrow by the end of, by four o'clock.
Inquiries or packages received?
Packages received.
Of what their proposals are?
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. The package received is going to be tomorrow. I have one by email. Two of them are just verbal. They were shown, so I take that back. I have two that I actually have in front of me about tomorrow. And two are verbal, they said they would email about tomorrow, but.
You mean email you their proposals or how they would sell it, how they would advertise it, what they would charge the tenant?
They were talking, a couple of people talked about numbers and part of the numbers were a little lower than I thought because there's equipment missing in there. And they have to replace that equipment that was removed during the past move out.
So, what numbers, what numbers were they called?
Eight fifty.
Eight hundred and fifty?
These are, these are, these are real estate auctions, you see.
And that's a reserve?
Yes, sir.
What is, what is a reserve?
Well, that I don't know. I don't know about the reserve.
Part of the request for information was a suggestion of a reserve.
It was just verbal, so I don't know if that's what we're going to put in writing, and I don't want to speak out of turn. That's the numbers I was told about two different potential.
Another big question we've, we should have for any of them.
Yes, sir.
If it does not need the reserve.
Right.
What is a no sale fee that they're going to charge the tenant?
Gotcha, okay.
A few auction companies charge none.
In some.
Some charge as much as half or whatever.
And then bid.
Yeah.
So if they get in and bid was eight hundred, our reserve was eight fifty, and they charge ten percent, that's eighty thousand, we didn't get sold.
Well, that's what I will bring the packets to you and, and let you guys make that final decision. I was supposed to have everything by four o'clock tomorrow. All I, all I had is verbals and showings.
That's fine, I'm glad, I'm glad we got response.
Yes, sir, yeah, so, and, and everyone I spoke to in the show thought it was, it was, it would be something they think they could, they could auction off. Now, at the price we wanted, they're talking, they don't know.
It's an auction, we're taking it, we're, we're not spending money.
No.
To put it back as a bowling alley.
That's what I told them.
We're going to have to spend a hundred and some thousand.
And that's what they were taking into consideration when they were trying to come up with a price. I don't think a couple of them realized that equipment was gone until they walked in. And I started showing them, they went, oh, okay.
Do you have an equipment list that's missing and its value?
I, I do, our commonwealth attorney has that list.
Are we going, are we going after them, by the way, are we going after them?
Oh, we were.
She, I sent her, I don't, I don't know if they are or not.
I, I, I don't know what stats that is. I spoke to our commonwealth attorney and gave her the file. And I know her and Mr. Bowen had had conversations.
Okay.
I don't know. From there, sorry. Yeah.
So we're, so we're going to have project, we're going to have some packages to review, which is great.
Yes, sir.
And then we just have to take pro and cons, and then obviously we're the owners, we can go back to them and say, we want to do this, we want to do that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
They, I presume that they can get this done by the end of the year? I think that would be.
Probably be able to get it sold and closed.
But wait a minute, ain't it in the R and P that if we choose one, we, we expect to sell within thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
That's a.
I'll say it again. As we sell things, I'd like to use it for our projects. This doesn't help our tax rate, but it does prevent us from having to borrow money. If we can sell these two houses in this bowling alley, all of a sudden we've got a lot of cash and animal shelter, we don't need to.
When we get that.
Let me clarify to Bowen now just a second. Are we selling the property as is, is that the proposal we get? Selling the property as is?
Correct. And it has four acres. I don't, it has four acres in the bowling alley, to get in the park.
The ability to not borrow money.
Go to our taxes.
And Mr. Bowen can relay that to the treasurer so she can earmark it.
But let me tell you, but let me tell you the other end of that, okay? So I've been, I was in a meeting today for a regular while. So, but they're finishing up the paperwork, it's due tomorrow at twelve o'clock to borrow seven point one million dollars for the radius system. That bowling alley is borrowed by assets collateral. Okay, but it's not anymore, it won't be anymore. So I'm just letting you know.
You mean, yeah, but we would have the cash that those assets will be worth to apply it towards once we sell the bowling alley.
Well.
You know, you would have.
But that's not, but that's not what the, that's not what the application. And that, right now I can't say, I, I can only give them the cash that we do have.
Correct.
Collateral, but I'm just letting, just letting know every time we.
Well, did they, do you feel that we own the bowling alley?
That's right.
Right, and so if we sell the bowling alley, we put the cash in the bank.
Yes, why?
We still have assets.
Or we put the cash in the new animal. Still got the, the net worth of the county, didn't you?
Let me ask you this, the animal shelter wasn't listed as an asset, right?
It was.
No, it's not.
So you got, so that changes.
Yeah.
So you went from offer, from offer money to these real estate.
The two, the two questions that they, that were, the contract owners making sure. It's, it's like that they want to know how we make money off the the officer. You got to be, you really got to be very transparent, it's a lot of, it was a lot of questions.
A lot of.
It's a lot of money. But anyway, this, I was a little learning curve for me today, but in other words, this is saying what it is, the whole courthouse complex is powered by collateral.
Correct. Can, can we sell it?
That's a good question. Maybe we let it fall closed on.
That's right.
Yours can make this.
So just like, I understand, there's no prepayment penalty on this radio. And they're going to do a couple draws. So if we get a pile of money together from the sale of the bowling alley, perhaps we'll want to pay cash for one of our draws. Because then we'd like to pay interest. It's all, it's all good.
And you said seven point one?
Yeah, they, they put up, they put it seven, I know it's only supposed to play six, but they, they don't, they're not, they don't guarantee that grant money.
I got you.
But that, but we are, we, but they are, we had, had a great buddy in today, and Cheryl, connect Cheryl to them, say, tell us a little bit about the grant money. Because that's part of the loan.
Right.
So that's why it says kind of up to seven point one.
I got you.
But we don't have to borrow that much.
No.
We just got, it's kind of like having a line of credit.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Um, and I think I will solve this really, talk about it, anyway, that, I just, that, that all, everything's kind of tied intogether. Something else I want to say about it.
Some more positive income is going to be the two properties that Mr. Fred Circles is purchasing. He has a closing date with his lender of August eighth. And that's the property on Butterwood Trail and the property on Dominique Corner in Route Forty.
What were those totals again?
I believe one thirty-five and one sixty-five.
One sixty-nine, maybe.
Yeah, something.
That's three hundred in cash, right?
Yeah. And, yeah, so I've been getting information to him so he can move forward with it. So it's supposed to close on the eighth.
If it closes on the eighth, is it within his contract?
Would you put it in the I D?
Yes, sir.
It is?
Yeah.
How long was that, do you remember?
Thirty days.
I don't think, thirty days was the time we went into a contract.
I do believe so. And, and that's something his name was trying to get here, yeah.
So do we need to, do we need to go over special projects again? So it doesn't get lost? So it doesn't get lost in general fund?
It came, did it come from the L R A came?
It can stay in the L R A, but we could open a account on the L R A just as.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what was.
Yeah, keep it separate.
Keep it separate.
The treasurer's working on a coding, like type of maintenance. When she gets things, she'll enter the coding so we know what it belongs to.
Yeah, the.
Well, actually, we'll have a dent here shortly, we put the three hundred, put it right on a dent.
Definitely. Yep.
Yeah, it's gone.
Does she still got a code?
Right, it's got to come in and go back down.
To deal with the treasure.
So the, well, we're not here to talk about it, but I just, but we're talking about finance, so let's talk about. So, uh, I don't know where the communication, the translation changed, so I'm not sure there, but we're waiting on the animal shelter to pay Mr. Basel three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. We're waiting for, y'all heard it, I had his on my, Gary Eller to finish that up.
I thought he said he was going to do it next week.
He said, no, he said he would do it by the end of July, which was yesterday. I, I haven't reached out to him, I'm going to wait until tomorrow, see how it's coming. But, reason I'm telling you that is, I was told that the treasurer had sent some of that money into a C D, and it's not, that offer money is tied up in that C D. But I can't, I can't touch it sometime in August, is what I was told. But I don't know that date yet, I got to talk to him. In other words, he'll get penalized.
We'll put it in a C D and withdraw it or?
Oh, I guess, I mean, I guess.
But.
It used to be legal, but it's not anymore.
But the thing about it is, it just needs to be earmarked right into the right. Oh, anyway. The other thing, the other way I want to tell you is, when I suppose we're coming to courthouse, it's just like, you know, we talked about when we put the tower up. That was, that was an issue today with the loan. Put the tower up, they asked me what we planned to rent, to utilize that tower to rent to others. I said, maybe eventually, maybe, we need to know that, because that's.
Not so much for collateral as it repayment ability.
And that's what, and that's what I told them, where they said, no, that, we need, it's, and with the V R A, there's a stipulation there, but you're making money off their money. And so we have to tell them what we're planning to do once we get that bar. I said, we have not.
Can we, can we say honestly, and I mean, no, but once the debt's paid, we'll do what we want to, it's our time.
Or, or, and before the, before the debt's paid, we can put in, in agreement with them, that they entitled to pay on our principal what we receive in rents off of.
Yeah.
I, I just think, I think, I think it's more.
You put it on debt first.
Yeah. Yes.
So, so the answer there is, is yes, but we don't have any details, but we'll apply it to them.
Right. I mean, that's pretty much my answer right there, so, we check.
And we don't have any, we don't have any way to.
Will we get it?
All right, what else did you have there, Shane?
We are current on all residential and commercial rents. And the total for July income was twenty-nine thousand five hundred forty-one. The total from the past four months is one hundred twenty-seven thousand one hundred thirteen dollars. So that's our positive income. We're still have the officers club booked, which is good. Good, that's a lot of net income on that. After that, the only other thing I would ask is the board, your advisement on, I've held off a little bit on some of our apartments over at the lodge, at the park lodges. Because it costs money to get them ready to rent as people have moved out, and it takes money to maintain them. I don't have a maintenance tech, so those calls come to me. I get after hours calls, emergency calls all the time. I don't have anybody during the day to help me, so I'm using contractors a little more than I want to. So I do have some vacancies, if you want me to start renting them out, and it's going to take a little money to get them up and running. Or we can just hold off for right now because we have other things in the works. And I, I, I'm kind of at that place.
Your, your income was twenty-nine thousand dollars in July?
Yes, sir.
What was your expense in July?
And that I don't have it for me, I'm sorry.
Because that would help us answer to whether we need to renovate the apartment. How much people cost to renovate departments and how much is renovated?
The problem is, these are the, these are the ones who are losing money.
Yes.
And continue to lose money.
Yes. And some of the apartments, I have about twelve of them right now, that the renovations will be anywhere from two thousand to four thousand each, because.
And how much is the rent on them?
For maintenance?
How much?
Three hundred and thirty a month.
Well, we can go up on the rent, but we can go up on the rent. Their rent is way too low anyway.
It is, it is, but.
But also, are these ones that need renovations right now, have they been renting out recently?
Somewhere, and as they moved out, we learned the condition of the apartment. A lot of people don't call us and tell us they're having problems, so they move out when we discover it.
And then we pay their utilities on these two.
Utilities, we pay water, electricity, and cable.
You need to fix them and triple the rent, whatever that area will warrant. Because if it's sitting empty, it's going to continue to, to go down.
What else I'm saying, I, I, I went through it, but I'm saying either we stop sinking money in it, or we fix it and put the rent, make the rent applicable to it. Exactly, make the rent.
Because if we don't fix it, we're going to fall into the blight deal, and we don't want to go to that.
Yeah, because we will bite that bill.
We just spent thirty thousand dollars, not. I had this response from the Colonel. I passed this up my chain of command response, was that we will provide an update as soon as we get word from U S A C E. They move slowly, but are tracking our intent.
And I'll be honest with you, that's kind of what I was hinging on, whatever. The future, I'm being honest with you, I've been holding off, I didn't want to put people in.
I mean, the day, the day that you and I went through them.
Yes, sir.
As soon as you have, the buildings were built nineteen forty-one.
Yes, sir, I believe so.
So every repair is custom repaired.
It is.
Expensive.
Even a window to replace it, they're all, yeah, you're exactly right. Even, even painting a window to replace it.
So it sounds like it's three out, one, we're going to sell it, and we need to know soon, or soon enough. Two, we're going to renovate them and get higher rent, or three, we're going to tear them down. It don't sound like there's nothing in between, because you can't let them sit there.
And, and I can tell you this, and, and Mr. Collins probably knows this as well as anybody. The type of, uh, type of units we have to rent, you're not going to get much more than what we're asking now, even if they were renovated. It's just the type of.
They must really trash.
Well, a lot of it's just a single room, and then you have shared.
In the shared, shared bathroom.
Shared bathroom.
And basically.
And in the hallway, someone uses that.
All right, so, so let's figure this another way. All right, now, if you have to go out and get bids, you're allowed to be looking at thirty days getting bids, then at the time you do construction, you're allowed to be ninety, hundred and twenty days doing construction. We may have an answer for them then.
That's right.
So.
And, and put in, and when we get sick in bids, I, and come to the figure right in there that, uh, in event we become under contract to submit, you don't do no work to it.
Yeah. So that's the thing, but the only bad thing about it is, this, what we're talking about with the Colonel doesn't work, then we've waited four months, five months, six months, and they've done nothing.
Yeah, that's position, I mean, right, what you just described, that's.
We just have to take, we just have to take it what we get.
I, I, that's what I'm thinking, going to get, going to get the price, going to get the stuff lined up, and then we have to move forward with the repairs and ready to rent, and that's what we did.
Well, one of the things I did in preparing for this at the beginning of the year is I converted all of our leases over to month to month. I already did that. In anticipating this may happen, that's what I did. All of, all of them were converted over other than one commercial. And, and, and they have sixty days to move out, other than one that has ninety.
Shane, I didn't know what I was looking at the other day when I went through that. You had a, a showing at the bowling alley, so I weren't able to meet.
Yes, that's okay.
But what I thought I was looking at was in nineteen forty-one buildings, like where the co-op and all is that?
Other right, the screen.
Those are the county building?
Yes.
Is anybody, how many people do you got working the shop within your department that knows that?
Zero.
We need somebody with a paintbrush like that.
It's just me.
Who cuts the grass? I thought you.
My inmate work crew.
We froze that position, yes.
So that's when we had that meeting at the beginning of the year, talking about junk lawn mowers and tractors.
Yeah, that's me.
So why, so if we only had one person involved, who were in the back getting two or three lawn mowers running in?
Because that's the inmate.
At the inmate, that makes.
Getting inmates painted.
Yeah, they do, the inmates can paint. Yeah, they, they did it for the, I had them doing it for the fire training center. They do paint.
They need to paint bad.
Yeah, I don't mean to be, we got, we got.
Mr. Chairman, just want to clarify the direction. Now, you're talking about just making repairs to keep things moving, not building walls for Southside Community College, things like that.
No, that's correct.
Okay.
No, in repairs, what we were thinking by moving is, is getting beer prices for those repairs, not even getting them done.
Getting beer prices.
To get them runnable again.
Do you, Mr. Tote, you want me to bill, I mean, he's not even going to call me out on it. You want to expenses in July for, when you're saying that you want contractors and staff?
What are you all like?
Yeah, right, because, because seeing staff.
That's right.
We don't look at that cost line.
I can get that for you, it's, I have it on.
Yeah, I, I just say total expense, I think that's what you look for total.
Yeah, 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 to see whether, I mean. We are going to be in hope.
I know already.
I'm going to have to look, I can tell you.
When, when you and I get together, we'll go over that too.
Yeah, I can show it, and, and, yeah, so that's what I've been holding off on, because I didn't want to put people in if we were doing something with thermal shaper, and then turn around later and say, you got to do it. So.
But then again, that's the reason for the thirty day.
That's right, month to month.
Yeah, so, if you want, I'll move forward now, not every apartment is a two thousand dollar pair, I don't need that. But I'm saying, a lot are. I can get people in here if you want me to, I can do a, I can do a leasing blitz and get people in there.
I think a couple of us ought to go over there and walk it, and find out what we, go back to the other, what we think that is worth in rent value. Three hundred, you go, with three hundred and thirty-five dollars a month, it, it's got to be really made off, it really.
You tell them, we pay utilities.
We pay. I know, I heard you just say that.
Cable and everything, we can take.
Yeah, I can tell you three, three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I said, you paying that in utilities?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a whole lot cheaper, and that, we put the dog.
All right, so let's, let's, let's move quick, because we got, we got three minutes here. Any informational items on the lease or, or anything, do we need any lease actions? No, sir. All right, Steve, did you have anything else?
I just want to, so you, you all got some questions that's been asked for you from the editor of the paper, but one of them's going to be going to you, so make sure we get this right, because the question is finally, this has come from staff.
Okay.
Close business tomorrow, listing offers from the auctioneer is interested in selling the bowling alley. So what I, what I'm hearing is right, he's asking, what is the, I mean, is it, is it all written, like, how is it written, Shane, and how many is it?
Say that one more time, what are you asking me?
I'll send it to you tomorrow. When you read, when you read what he's asking, you got to be very careful what you say.
Yeah, and, and the written offers, also, any of that offers need to be proposed.
Yes, yeah.
Because he may say eight fifty, but if there's a no sale fee, we didn't have to sell.
That's a great point, yes, sir.
That needs to be in there, which we don't, we only have reviewing them, we're not selecting them. But that, we don't need to kick the can in another thirty days and say, this is what they think is worth, okay Shane, go back and see what they're selling for.
Do you want me to just stand and email everyone the copies, or just for Steve and let Steve distribute them as needed? Would that be okay? Is that, or I'll hand deliver them to you.
And we know the rules.
Offer and proposals to sell, right Steve? And propose, how much they going to cost us? Offers and proposals.
Yeah, I'll have that for you tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, all right, board, authority members, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All the papers signify by sitting down and standing where you're at.
Thank you all very much. Any time you would come out, we'll.
We'll get together, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, board members, we're going to call the next meeting in order here, for the work session for the board supervisors, I need a motion to approve the agenda for.
I'll make a motion.
All right, can I get a second? All the papers signify by saying aye. All right, T R C, you are at the helm, folks.
Hey. My name is Mike Lawless, I'm a geologist at T R C, and, and working.
I don't think they all want you as a real person, Mike.
And I brought a couple of other guys with me too, not being too sure of what, which direction the conversation might go.
With this group, it's liable to end up anywhere.
So we got Bill Salamone here, he's an engineer that works out of the landfill. And there's a lot of the design and leachate type issues out there. And J P Lengish, a geologist, works on your groundwater program.
Okay, all right. Well, Steve, I don't know if you want to take the corner, or how you want to do this, but basically, as you know, previous gentleman had come before us and gave us some information. One of the big things we were waiting for was a side-by-side comparison of day-to-day cost compared to running a transportation to, to a landfill right there. I didn't want you guys feeling like y'all had to start at the top going way down, because the board members versed a little bit in it.
Yeah, I can, I've got a presentation I can put on screen.
Mike, what's your relationship with the county, are you a contractor, do we hire a consultant?
Consultant, consultant that you hire.
Do you have it every year, or we, it's just a long-running?
It's a probably, it's prime year term contract, it's annual contract. It gets renewed each year, doesn't need to be renewed each year. And we are not charging you at all tonight, so you got three people here that are here to help the county and we're not.
Just kind of, Mr. Collins, kind of giving you an example, I'm going to use Bill's example, we had that, we had that leachate going to the stormwater, where T R C comes out there to tell us what to do fast, and then they notify D, they, they do the talking to D Q, so we don't goof that up.
Y'all take care of filing and all that stuff with D Q on behalf of the county.
Correct, that's right, that's right.
Because you are hired consultant.
Correct. We're trying to work with you and work with the, with the landfill team and just, you know, keep, keep them compliant, so it's a, you know, it's a team effort.
Where are you guys at?
Richmond.
Okay.
Will, will we get any type of warning, Bill comes along, whoever the team comes in and says, okay Gary, this is what you need to do to satisfy this warning? Uh, to keep us from getting fined, because fines went up to twenty-five thousand?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yes, you don't want to do.
For clarification, these consultants is for the, what we currently have now, or for the proposed tipping station and who?
Both. Right now, what we have.
Right now, what we have, we can't manage ourselves, we got to have a consultant.
And like, yes, sir, yes, sir, I mean.
But for all of these years, it did get mounted, but all of a sudden it can't be mounted for long.
It's always, you always have these.
These guys always work for the county?
Yeah, what was T R C, which you called for?
So not away has always had paid consultants for that landfill.
Uh, as far as I'm aware, yes.
Previous.
We, yeah.
Then why were you the one to order them tanks to hot, to put that leachate in, why won't they do it?
We, we.
Go ahead.
I don't understand.
So our pond filled up, and we had to get some storage tanks to put the leachate water in. Steve got ahold of some companies in Lynchburg and stuff and got them tanks down here, and then had to, had a lot of problems getting them pumped out. How come if we, if y'all was employed, why didn't y'all do it?
That's not, we, we're doing consulting, we're not doing it. The, the.
So.
The person that supplies tanks, that's definitely not.
So here's an example, so let's get example. Uh, just recently. So D Q came out, what, two weeks ago, right? Bill, and there was a question about, you know, you saw the post?
Yeah, you, you told us that.
Okay, well, they helped us clarify, I'm going to see how to say it, clarified that how all that water can go past that hole. And then there's a stormwater, it was a management plan that had to be adjusted to, to meet that, so I don't know.
There's a leachate management plan that tells, that tells you where that, what the level in the pond is, so, yeah. We're, we're not, we, we weren't part of the recommendation to the tanks, I mean, if somebody, that was an operational choice. There was really no other choice.
So, so that's what, that's why I was going with it, so in, in y'all's plan is, if it goes beyond a certain level, boys, county, gals, this is what y'all do, you get tanks put in.
That's really your only option unless you can pump leachate out faster. You had a situation there where.
We talked about reci- reg- regenerate.
Um, they did, they did recirculate. So you had a situation there that wasn't caused by the county where there was a problem at the waste wa- wastewater treatment plant.
Well, we was taking all leachate.
And they said, well, we won't take it anymore. So leachate started to back up. Um, so before I was on board, Bill Hayes, he just retired. He said, well, you're allowed to recirculate. So when they recirculated, it caused some, some other, uh, problems there and they had some leachate. So we were out helping, um, this, we're, uh, talking to the DEQ, writing letters and explaining the situation and trying to get that resolved. To address the warning. As far as like the decision about the tanks, that wasn't something that, that was an operational decision. You could, you know, hi Gary.
Hi.
So the, you, you could, Gary said, Gary could have chosen to, to truck more out, but it has to be trucks available to do that. It has, you have to have somewhere to go and there's only so much places that will take. So that's, that's.
Well, we knew, we knew all that. Uh, recirculating part. I didn't know that these guys was involved the day that we talked to Gary and we found out within that thirty minutes that we could recirculate. Why didn't we already know that we could recirculate? Why weren't they already in the plan?
It is.
Yeah, don't go ahead.
No, it, it was actually already an operational plan. We couldn't, we couldn't do it. I ended up calling, um, Bill Hayes who.
The guy that retired.
Yeah.
That's who you called to find out we could do it?
Just to make sure. I mean, I know we could, they, they, uh, they kind of recirculated years ago. Uh, whatever's still in effect, that's what I, that's what I needed to know. I knew they had.
So he was your go-to man to find out that day?
Yeah.
You can see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And recirculation is not, that's not ideal. That's not what you want.
No, he just keeps a minute.
You're just picking the can.
He's usually saying what's going right back in.
You want, you want, you want to do that as your last resort and I think you've suggested everything possibly could, so, yeah. So, uh.
All right.
So we, we, uh, yeah, we've got a couple of different, um, task orders that we work on out there. One of them is for monitoring, so the groundwater, gas, reading gas. Yeah. I'm a part of that, you know, JP's part of that and then, uh.
Okay.
So.
I'm new to this board. I'm new to y'all.
All right.
I've been in the dairy business about all my life, beef cattle business and the farming. I got a lot of common sense. I ain't got a lot of book sense. You can grill me, but I will grill you back. Okay.
So we're gonna learn a little bit about the solid waste industry tonight.
All right.
Um. I want to do a couple of things. One is I want to review what we did in the phase one evaluation and where we are with that. And then, uh, we had also proposed to do a second phase where we look in a little more detail at one or two select options that the county really wants to look at in more detail. So phase one was kind of a thirty thousand foot view, um, and we were, we, uh, we were taking a look at the existing operations within the county, landfill, collections, convenience center sites, all that. So it was, there was a lot of data collection, um, so that we've got the information, uh, that we can determine what the costs are, where there are opportunities for increased efficiencies, um, and then use that data to kind of guide you in your decision-making process about how you want to handle your solid waste in the future. So this is the current landfill you're in, you're in cell five right now. Um, taking in about sixty tons a day, about eighteen thousand tons a year. Um, is that been pretty steady, Gary?
Yeah.
So, you know, we were looking at the existing landfill operations based on those tonnages. Those are low tonnages, um, to operate land. But you can do it and you can do it and cover your costs and make a little bit of money. But you've gotta have your tipping fees, uh, a little bit higher than you might normally, because landfills are really built around an economy scale. Because the infrastructure has some fixed costs to it and the more waste you can bring in, the more revenue you can bring in.
I would like a quick discussion, Gary, you can maybe help with this. So the town, we, we get three dollars on the town's utility bill? That's correct?
Yeah.
I personally took a trailer load out of a rental house. Took it cross-scale and put it in the landfill. I never received a bill.
Well, that's interesting. Um. Most of the time, depending on the, uh, what you bring, the material.
It was furniture. It was household goods. It was that whole house.
Okay. As far as household goods, we don't charge.
So.
If you'd have brought in, um, street rock, construction bridge, we wouldn't charge. We'll call you a resident of Nottaway County. We don't charge.
We could do better with that.
That, that's scary if you put, but that's on the board.
But that was, yeah, but that was a, that was something I didn't understand. So that, that's the answer to my question. If it been cut up plywood and drywall and paint cans and.
We'd charge.
Then you'd charge.
So, so I did some digging there, cause you, you brought that up before me, probably enough in conversation, Bill. I just wanted to share this with you. I know we, we, we gotta get into this. But this is what we, this is what we got posted and it says, items that must be taken to the land, items that must be taken to landfills, these items may incur a charge at the current la- landfill rates. Appliances, furniture, da-da-da-da. I think that word may.
It's a mighty.
That's right, that's right. So if we, if we take that out of that.
It depends on who you are.
So, I, you know, we're losing, but, but that's what we're here for today, Mike.
So when we look at these, we look at these tons, there's perhaps opportunity there to change our way of doing buildings to increase. The income. Okay.
Okay. Y'all mind me? This, um, the tonnage rate is actually pretty good.
Yep.
Um, you know, just looking at it, the tonnage rate is, is right along pretty much where it should be. Uh, again, is what we charge for. I brought to the attention of board, the thing on Zeta four about what we could do, something that we could do in the county that would help us, but that was the, um, you know, charging the titles, which we gotta be from. The discretion is the scale of tennis, whether he's gonna charge you for what you brought in.
I think if it goes across scale.
Then, then don't go across that. I mean, that's what somebody's gonna say. It depends on what's on there, what, whether it needs.
That's why we have to keep an accurate record of, you know, tonnage per day.
Oh, yeah.
Whether you're charging or not.
And you're saying the more value you got, cause you got a fixed rate of expense app.
That's right.
Of course, you're doing bigger, then less that's gonna be.
Yes, right. And then where we are with the, uh, the actual stuff that's coming across the scale that front of us, something that we don't take into convenience. You go to convenience store, what they gonna tell you coming to the landfill? A lot of people say, hey, if I go to the landfill, I'm gonna be charged. We still don't charge the residents for bringing in that bulk of material. Uh, we don't put it in the transfer station because it, you know, fills.
More work for y'all. That's right, more hours, more work.
So if you bring it to the landfill, you know, the box is easy for us.
So it's just, it's a place where we can have conversations. In certain part of the landfill is a service due to the citizens of the county.
Well, that's what I was getting at.
They're paying the utility bill every month.
They're, they're paying that utility bill. It's still paying taxes. I want to provide this service, so when you start charging, when it go across the scale. You were here.
Speaking of which, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people in our county that got their own dump boxes. It goes to land, goes to Ludenberg.
Right.
Um. I guess that's much like a child going to a private school. They still pay the state taxes. Your wife, and you didn't use it, so you still pay.
Right.
So good thing that that trash ain't accounted for, because we'd run out of sale before. I know a lot of independent people that's got their own dump boxes that don't come to the Nottaway landfill that our residents might. Okay.
Okay.
So we account for that too, really.
Yes, okay. All right, so, um, just to kind of show you where the landfill is, when we did this report back in twenty twenty-three, uh, it looked like it had capacity to mid-two thousand twenty-seven. In January, we resurveyed, redid numbers and it actually looks like now you're good to mid-two thousand twenty-nine with airspace. So it's, we're not in an emergency situation where you've gotta do something right away, but nothing in solid waste happens quickly. So it's good we're having this conversation now, so we've got some time to figure out the specific direction you want to go and then really kind of evaluate that data.
Well, can I ask you something? Cause that page and a little further ahead on the budget, it's gonna kind of tie in together. All right, four years here and then you're talking about eight and a half on the other sales. You're talking twelve and a half years. All right, so can you, eh, help me with this? Uh, with the same, with the inflation factor under the budget, seven point one, or the increase is five, over half a million dollars, five hundred seventeen thousand dollars. So. And I know in years past, previous county administrators had said that cost was growing at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. All right, so can we expect that closure rate at current inflation rate over the next twelve and a half years' time, a half million?
Uh, potentially.
There you go.
The, the annual increase, that seven point one percent, this year DEQ's factor bill is three point three. So it fluctuates each year, you know, based on what the cost of living is, so.
Right. Yeah, so that, that's, that's one of the things we were talking about, because it, it's like I said, in, in the past, it has always been like a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. One year, we had the two sales open and it jumped over three hundred thousand dollars because there was two sales open, because we were constructing one and one hadn't been closed.
Right.
So at a minimum, at a minimum, if we even back to the old average, we're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next twelve years to be added to this seven point two billion dollar.
Yes.
Okay.
At a minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, it's not based on inflation rate, right, but he, he just said that the inflation rate currently is three.
Twenty twenty-four.
All right, well, three point three.
So that's almost half of what is predict, uh, projected seven point one, right?
They, they, there's, that's probably based on a ma- average over many years.
Okay.
And, and they revise it every year and it does.
That was right.
So I wouldn't talk about.
It's, it's in the, the one fifties in the ballpark.
Right.
There may be some years where it's less, there may be some years where it's a little bit more.
Right.
Some years it's a lot.
Right.
Um, but.
And in order for us to meet that number, we have to continue to add that each year to that number. So that number's gonna continue to grow.
Correct.
I had the one that says that.
That's right.
Yeah, we figure those numbers for you every year and submit those.
Okay.
We just submitted, um, not last week, two, two weeks ago.
Okay, all right. I didn't, I didn't mean to jump too far here, but it's kind of like right into the next.
It's better to have this as a discussion than just be talking. You've got to sit there, so, now, so, jump in with questions. Um, so when we looked at the financial aspect of the landfill based on what we could figure for expenses and income, you're down about thirty thousand dollars a year. Um, which in the grand scheme of things is a, is a gap that could be closed. Um, you know, if we took a look at tipping rates, uh, took a look at, um, you know, some of your other operational costs, uh, and just had it as a, a bigger picture of the overall solid waste management in the county. So what that says is it, it's not a clear, it's not a clear answer that the landfill's a loser. You know, you're close to breaking even. And, you know, if we look at some efficiencies, um, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can close that gap entirely and maybe make some money. It's like a huge money maker, just because of the amount of waste that's coming in. But that didn't, the, the financial numbers didn't take it off the table.
All right, let me ask, let me ask the question. You said this is from county's twenty twenty-two audit with an adjustment of two hundred fifteen thousand fifty-nine dollars additional expense that was paid out of the general fund. Is that included in the expense at the top?
Yes.
So that is included in that?
It is included.
It's still full.
So you lost two hundred fifteen thousand.
So, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm at a general fund.
That's right.
I almost like had your numbers maxed.
Yeah, but. So really, net position minus thirty thousand one hundred and seven.
It's two forty-five.
Yeah.
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty-five, really.
Yeah, so like you said, if, 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 I guess, if we're willing to pull the two, well, because we're looking at this number.
Well, you're providing the citizen's district service.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that service is, is not, otherwise it's not paying for itself.
Right.
It's not close to paying for itself.
Right.
And it's only gonna get worse by going up a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and plus the hundred, the two hundred.
I mean, it's nowhere near the same, the same, but it's like, you, you, you know, just like the dog tags don't pay for the animal.
No.
Right, you see what I'm saying? There's no way close.
But it has, but it has.
Can you provide a service?
You gotta have to write a service. You owe that to your system. Every county does, don't they?
You're required to. You're required to. Emergency services, trash.
Right.
Animal control.
Oh, why are you collecting that, right?
That's right. All right, we better keep moving along.
Yeah, as, as, when we were doing this report in the first half of twenty twenty-three, volume was down. I don't know, we had, I haven't seen final numbers. Did the numbers in twenty twenty-three come out somewhere in twenty twenty-two or did you notice?
Twenty twenty-two, we had, you talking me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two, we had, uh, some, uh, construction going at Watford.
Okay.
So all that.
So all that stuff came in.
Was coming in.
So that didn't come in.
Some of it was in in Blackstone too, but.
Yeah.
And they were, and they paid tip.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so you lose that revenue too.
And then twenty twenty-four is what, what really hurt us is from the leachate. From the rain, January, February, March, until I came on board.
Yeah.
Plus the problem of not having a place to go. That hurts, that hurts me anytime.
Um, but you, you do have some things, some systems that you're putting in place to better track the revenue and the expenses and that. You know, when we get to phase two, if we want to look in more detailed landfill, you all have those numbers and you can do a more detailed analysis.
Okay, but when you're talking about the E nine one one stuff that is, is off, that the, uh, if the census is correct, it could be potentially missing sixty-two thousand dollars. We need to send that over to who? The treasurer, commission or revenue? To make sure we're tracking, tracking that, because.
That matters in a lot of things.
Oh, absolutely.
What are you talking about?
All right, go down to the, the next to last bullet point.
Coming out of there.
Yeah, so, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's the, the, the fourth bullet.
Okay, so that, right, but that, that worried me too. Well, let me back up, so. And Mike, I appreciate, Mike sent me this a little ahead of time to give me a little bit ready and I appreciate you doing that. But you wouldn't let, if you fixed it, well, I couldn't print it, you know, I don't know.
That was not on purpose.
So, so what I did, so what I did was I had, um, Logan pull all the electric, where, where we receive money from the electric. We got through electric, three electric companies in Nottaway County. Blackstone, Southside, DePaul. The total came, and, and this is twenty twenty-four, so I don't, if that, here's a problem. If you don't put it right in the bright system, it doesn't, whatever you put in, you can't get a good report. But on this report from, from July from twenty twenty-three to June twenty twenty-four, we get, we, we collected two hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
That's way up from that.
So if you divide that by thirty-six, which is three dollars a month, three times twelve, thirty-six. You come with six thousand seven hundred and sixty-four homes. So we close. But, but I'm still missing on some, I don't, I don't know. So I like, I talked to, like I had a conversation with Mr. Adam. Mr. Adam's got a ho- a horse barn meter in his, his house. He said that, that, that's the charge on the horse barn is less. I don't, it's.
A meter should be a meter.
That's what, he said, it's less than a three dollars.
Maybe it's because it's their second meter then.
I, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know. I, I can't, I can't, you know, oh, how do I? Please, I don't police that, I don't.
I should know the answer to that, whether the secondary meter is cheaper. It should be, because your residence has got its meter. So we got three meters on our one address.
Right.
But only one is for the resident. One for grain being, one for barn. Surely you wouldn't pay the same thing for the barn and the grain when it's a resident. I guess that's what it is.
So I, I'm not so much, so, and you, and I don't know if you gathered that information, Mike, or the guy for you, but I don't know what, I, you'll, that hundred seventy-nine thousand, I'm coming up with two forty-three, the last.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Which made me feel a whole lot better when I saw that, cause I did the same thing to you. I, I, I said, whoa, I'm missing money here.
Right, um, so this two, this one seventy-nine on your number, two forty-three on Steve. That's, if you go back a page, that's, that's in that income.
And let me back up, that, he did, that's a twenty twenty-two number.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. You're current, you're due to July. So on this page, that electric fee is in the income?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Bill.
Okay.
Why is Mr. Owen twenty-five percent of this coming from E nine one one? Was E nine one one dedicated to landfill?
You can use that money for any services.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent coming from E nine one one.
Yes, and what it is, it was, it was never dedicated, cause we dug into this one, it was never dedicated that you must use it for communications, so E nine one one. It was broad, they listed as services. This is a service.
So it is a service. And I think that Ms., Ms. Kelly found, uh, you found that where the board made that vote back in sometime another one.
It's not E nine one, it's a consumer toll.
Okay.
See, the, the answer to your question, this money's been dedicated? We wouldn't be in the bind with our radio.
That's what she said.
And I don't blame you. I agree. But then we'd be in a bind here.
A work buy.
A work buy.
A work buy.
Yeah, a work buy.
Cause I think it's what, if I had a hundred and eighty-one thousand, a hundred and eighty-three thousand coming from E nine one one, I think that's what.
Someone had to do it, I think it's right.
But my point was, it's incorrectly coded and it shouldn't be.
Yeah, it's the same code right here.
No, wait, wait, wait a minute. Hold on, I'm, I don't know about anybody coded. You asking, no, wait a minute now, the, the, the board, we got a, the resolution that says that's seven five twenty-five, right, Ms. Kelly?
I found it in the minutes where they discussed it.
You remember what year?
But what'd you say they called it a nap?
Assuming you to let it tax. I've provided it a couple of times, um.
So it was voted on August two thousand five?
This is the minutes where Mr. Rourke, um, announced it to the board. And.
So to, to get that changed, y'all got to vote to change that.
Two thousand six, which happened to go right when the law changed.
And when he says Mr. Rourke, he's somebody wrong.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, he was presenting to the board.
Yeah, that was a different tribe.
Whole different tribe. Whole different tribe.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just wanted you to have that.
No, no, no. I didn't say that, Joe.
I know you did. You don't know what's in that water either, do you?
So it's not being, so it's not being paid yet now.
But that was voted on, right?
Yes.
Is that the one that's got the spring on? I think it hears right.
Oh, you got, that, that, Ms. Orton wants to look at it, not me, I have to try to get that. Anyone.
I can watch sixty minutes and sixty minutes, don't take it too long.
Here's a, here's a more accurate statement, I think.
Yes.
Not a way county can't produce utility tax.
Yeah, that's right.
E nine one one's a fortunate, a utility tax.
It's always eighteen two thousand five.
Landline TVs, cable TV, that whole thing, that's what they consume in tow.
All right.
It's a lot of different communities.
But that can be changed.
Yes, yes, that's right. All right, so, gentlemen, go ahead, we.
Okay, so, we looked at three options in the phase one study. Uh, the first one was kind of business as usual, people landfill operating. Looking ways to increase efficiencies, increase revenue, make sure you're tracking everything accurately, so you have a good handle on where the situation is. Uh, the second option was to sell or lease the landfill to a private operator and then come in and run it. Uh, and then the third option was to close the landfill and, uh, transfer the waste to another landfill outside of town. So you build a transfer station or you contract with a private company to build the transfer station, collect that trash, the transfer station gets loaded on trucks and hauled to Amelia probably. And, and I'm not going to go through all this detail, I provided this to you so you have it for your reference.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I don't want to waste our time here, but the, uh, so the pro of keeping the landfill operating is that you, you have some control over your costs and your revenues. Um, that's one of the risks with the transfer station is you're hauling it to another landfill and they're setting the price. And the price might look good for that first five year, ten year contract, but you can be guaranteed when you renew the contract, that price is going up. Not to mention the fuel costs, all the waste from your transfer station to the landfill. And tho, those are two things you really have very little control over.
How many private landfills are within truck distance and not leaking?
Uh, we'll go through that here, but the two close, the Ludenberg is one, Ludenberg Amelia are the two closest.
Right.
The, the others that are further out, it's just, uh, you know, it's probably, probably not going to be feasible, maybe there's a lot more than the payments to the fuel costs. Um, but, uh, one of the cons of keeping the landfill open is that you will have to pay to build a new cell once cell five is closed or full. Uh, cell six, uh, we were looking at a figure of about two point two million, uh, a couple of years ago. Based on construction costs that we're seeing now, that is likely to be closer to three, to three point three.
Just to build a new one.
To build a new cell, to build cell six. It's about, it's a little over three acres and the costs we're seeing right now are about a million dollars.
And when you got to shutting that, closing off the cell.
Correct, correct.
It, one of our citizens asked us that question, uh, Mr. Havitt actually was, is that's eight million dollars a good number? I mean, I, I think that number came from TRC, I don't know where it came from.
It's a good number and we.
To close it, that was it.
That's if you closed it today.
Yes, through cell five.
Right.
We have, um, and I may have those numbers back here, uh, somewhere, but, uh, and I think I might have sent them, um, before, but yeah, it was, I, I may have, yeah. It's because we've got the, we've got the, a range of closure costs to close through cell five and then additional closure costs that you would need to set aside to close cell six if you were to do anything.
So this is the other part of the question, that's, that's a good question. The board's got to decide what they want to do, okay? But let's say, here's the question I gotta want to ask, I gotta make sure I ask it right. If they decide to keep staying in the landfill business, how much time do you need to get all permits ready for cell six?
Cell six is permitted.
Oh. So I, it has no.
Permits are done through, uh, through cell six. We'd need to notify DEQ.
And that won't, no more calls, no more?
The next, the permit, the skate permits in place, what will come next is the construction documents. So you're gonna have to prepare construction documents. That's about, um, I don't know, it's, um, six months, I guess. Do we, do we pay money for permits?
Yes.
But, but it's already been done on.
Well, it was all permitted together, so it wouldn't have been any different if you just permitted through five or six.
So the, there's a, the construction document process goes through the, uh, the county, so the, or the state, whoever's regulating that. So you have to get a local.
And if the decision is made to stay with the landfill and you do want to build cell six, you got to start with those construction documents about two and a half, three years ahead of time before you're going to be full in cell five, because we've got to, we've got to prepare.
That's almost damn.
We got to prepare, yeah. Well, but the new date potentially is twenty twenty nine, based on the new survey.
It's giving you five, six years.
But it's still, yes, we don't have a lot, we don't have a lot of time, but we have.
So twenty twenty nine.
Yeah, because somewhere along the line was, it's something between the permit and the construction, or there's something like a five year process.
If you're starting from scratch, yeah, if you, if you, if you wanted to expand beyond cell six, which you don't have any permits for, then you're looking at five.
Okay, all right, so that's where the confusion came.
What, what, what's the need for, why take five years? Government, you can say it.
It's government, it is government. And in the case of wetlands, if there are any wetlands involved, central government coming in too. Um, it's, there's time to do the engineering drawings, because first, there's, it's a two step process, there's a part A and a part B. The part A shows that the land is appropriate for a landfill from a geologic standpoint and biological standpoint. You've already got a landfill here, but we've still got to go through the exercise to show that the area you want to expand in is good. That's generally a two year process.
See, you, you listening to that? Two to five years.
All right, so he, he keeps saying government's.
And then the second part of the permit is the part B, and that's where you actually design the landfill, the leachant collection system, you know, and all that other stuff, that's the detailed work. And, uh, that, uh, to say you can get that done in three years is maybe a little bit optimistic. So five years is, if you were starting from scratch, five years could be seven or eight.
Wow.
That's all expansion beyond what's permitted. We're talking about cell seven, eight.
Right, right.
We don't even know where.
And if the decision was made to stick with the landfill and to build cell six, then you're good through about twenty thirty five.
All right, but just.
To fill that, to fill cells, cells.
All right, but without the construction documents, all those details and everything, what are you looking for a fact right now? That the county would have to spend to open that next sale?
Two point three.
Well, three point three.
Right.
Three point three plus one point seven million for the next twelve years, that's at the low end of that inflation rate. You're talking five million dollars, just what you got to add towards closure, plus opening the new cell without getting to the construction documents and all that stuff. So you're looking at five million dollars right there, just to get to the next one open and then to close.
On the, on the tipping station versus, uh, having it go private? Y'all deal with some tipping stations, I'm sure, consultants for tipping stations? What's the woes to that? Other than what you already.
Option three.
In the first step, up in five years, where it's going at.
It's further down here.
All right.
So that's where we are with the landfill. Um, selling or leasing the landfill, the second option we looked at, that would be like, uh, selling to waste management or Meridian, Ludenberg sold theirs to Meridian.
Yeah.
They come in and they operate it, they handle everything. Um, we did not ask that question, because we didn't want to get it out on the street that you're doing that, but just looking at the waste in central Virginia and the landfill space that's here, it would be a hard sell to get a private company to come in and buy this, because you only have one more cell permitted. If you had another expansion that's permitted that'd give you thirty to fifty years of life, then you've got something that they would be interested in coming in and buying. But if you've got eight to ten years of life and they know they're gonna, they then would be on the hook to pay for the permitting for any further expansion, that's a hard sell.
So would, would they be on the hook for the, all the rules and stuff for the next thirty five years if they buy the whole?
For the post closure.
For the closure.
That, that would be in the sales agreement, and yes, you would want to do that.
Yeah.
But they would try not to.
They ain't gonna do that.
No, they're not gonna do it all, but you want to, you want a fair proportion, because you all already have some funds set aside. Um, but you don't want to be stuck with more than you should actually be responsible.
All right, yeah, the biggest setback to do a private is, that would be fine again if they said, okay, we're only gonna take not a way trash. But when you taking, Ludenberg's taking six, eight counties.
Yep.
They are getting income off of the landfill, Ludenberg County, because I, I, somebody told me that figure, and I think that figure was about four hundred and seventy thousand a year that they're really paying.
That's probably right.
Somebody can, that's probably. But look at the trash they take it from all out of camp.
That's the economy of scale. And so, you're right.
Yeah.
When you, if you sell this to a private company, they're going to want to bring in outside waste, because the more revenue they get.
Like you said, the more trash they have, like we are, the better the number is.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the county still has oversight on, you cannot take nuclear waste, medical waste and stuff like that.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, and I guess the one way to look at that, if you're looking to go and try to make that money, the Dollar General bag here and Blackstone is no different than the Dollar General bag in Princeville.
That's a really strong point. It's almost like the trash coming out of New York into the.
In a Dollar General bag.
In a Dollar General.
That's right.
Your problem is, it's a million more Dollar General bag than we got now.
I agree with, I said, if you wanted to go that way.
Right.
So option three.
So option three is the transfer stage. Um, the pro is predictable, but that's predictable in the short term. And the big thing is the fuel escalators, you don't have any control over what's going to happen with fuel. Um, and the tipping fees, you know, we've seen those go up year after year after year. And as we get, uh, more private landfills in the state with waste management, Republic and Meridian, they work very well together at making sure that those tipping rates continue to go up.
Do you consult, would you steal, do y'all firm consultants the candidates who does that tipping?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because if you'd have told me no, I'd have said that, then I see you leaning toward us not getting the tipping stand out of the joke.
No, I, and honestly, what we're, all we're trying to do is provide you guys with the information, so you can make a decision that's best for not a way county. Because these decisions are different in every locale.
Can you, can you open a tipping station and say five years down the road, say these numbers ain't working, they went up so much, now we want to start on cell six? Or do you got to pay to?
You, you could, but you would incur a lot of extra costs, because the permit at the landfill would stay in place, but then you're gonna have, you're gonna have to close it if you're gonna build the transfer station and not put any waste in there. So then you would have to reopen it and that would kick in some permitting requirements.
What about if we done it before we opened six? Before we started using six?
You could do that.
But after, we enclosed five, right, when we got the tipping station cleared?
Yep.
So if we said, we want a tipping station, we started putting a Morton building out there today and some concrete and some rubber tile loads, and we haul that stuff, get the contracts in place, do it all before we finish up five, get it going, shut down five, then we won't incur that extra expense, because we never opened six, right? Maybe ten years down the road, we could still go to six.
But if we go to a tipping station, don't we still have to maintain an open cell? Because.
No, in fact, they would not, they would not want.
So what happens if we have a hurricane and we got all this debris and all that?
Then it's, then it's going to the transfer station and it's going to Amelia, and you're paying even more.
Because you got more tonics.
All right, but if the county has a area to chip debris.
Yes.
And burn, we can do that without incurring the cost of shipping out of the tipping station.
Correct.
There you go.
Correct.
And so we could use cell six.
As long as what's delivered to you is sorted.
As storm debris. Yeah, so we're storm six, uh, we're cell six sets right now, we could use that to dump the storm debris. There you go.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
Well, can I, can I say something else? If we did the tipping station and it's three percent on the electric bill for the, from the citizens of the town.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The towns will either have to bring it to the transfer station
Mm-hmm.
or direct haul to the.
That's right.
Landfield.
That's right, because Blackstone may want to go, go on and take it to Linnabri.
Right, which is gonna drop the tunnels down that we get in the tipping station.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what do you do, I mean, if you're not getting the tunnels for the trailer, then you just run and the trailer down the road.
I don't think you got to move it till you get food.
Yeah, that's what, that's why we want to own it. That's why we want you guys to own it, run it, because.
And drive the trucks to get it over there.
Yeah, that, that's not.
Because there's no need to high source in that, if it goes that way to a trucking company, who's gonna make a thirty five percent return on it?
How many, how many, how many of the convenience centers have the masher?
Uh, well, three, I'm sorry, three.
Three. So, I don't mind, doesn't Davis Mill.
No, Davis Mill.
So that is where you run into a light truck, because you have a compactor. How much is a new, how much is a compactor for each? What's a, what's a new compactor? Like six hundred and I thought it was.
What they, a compact that then the mill will eliminate the two boxes that they have, but we have, we have the roll offs that will bring those containers to the transfer station and load the truck, they're compacted in the trailer. So you'll, you'll, uh.
I'm trying to see about not touching it twice. So if you.
He's got that box it up tight where it's at.
Right.
It's a load it, they don't open, load it, go to. Wherever you go.
Right. Um, to be honest with you, um, Davis Mill, unless we take the two boxes out, we don't have enough room in there to put up a compact system.
Just on the side.
Yeah, that's why the three that had the compact system, uh, they're the largest ones that the county pays.
So that would just be a matter of math later, just to say, okay, we're trying to get a compactor on everything, so we don't have to bring it back.
But I tell you, I think once we get to tip the tip, we done it that way, once you got the building, the concrete over, we want a whole lot larger compact of that, because it all needs to be compacted before it goes in the truck. Yeah, it's gonna be more tonnage, but it's gonna be less trip.
Right. All right, could it, could it be, could it be a, and that's why I invited the, the mayors to get here, or the town managers who will come. Is, is it possible if towns decided to take it on down to the, skip us, take it on to the, could the cost of trash be more for them?
Exactly, yes.
All right, I guess one of the.
It would still be an obligation.
But wait a minute, the elephant in the room is where does the three dollars go? No, it's if the towns are dumping it, carrying it themselves, do they get the three dollars off the meter? Or does the county get the three dollars off the meter?
I think the county gets the bill, so we still get the three dollars. Still our.
We still lose traffic.
It's still our citizens' traffic.
Right.
If they want to haul it over there, they're gonna want a little, they're gonna want a little something, something for this. They're not gonna run a damn truck over that.
Well, I think running the dump truck or the garbage truck would make any sense, running twenty miles.
No, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, no, I mean, it makes sense, I, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, because what I've heard before, it makes sense for not to worry about these considerations of these three dollars on the meters and have the towns continue just to come to the dump, uh, tipping stations at the, uh, transfer station. So.
To really, to really.
Not to, what would that?
They're not gonna choose not to. They're not gonna run, they're not gonna run, they're not gonna wear their dump truck.
They, they will end up, they got the fuel costs. Their routes are pretty much set.
Mm-hmm.
And by the time that, you know, they do a route, they can get to our landfill.
Before they can get to that one.
They can get to that one.
So then, and then once they get to the other one, the high volume of traffic is a small way now.
So that would, that would get the rest.
So if you, so your tipping station is going to be primarily for your towns and your two convenience centers that don't have compact. One of which is Atlanta, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's just Davis Mill.
Well, no, the one out there on Genito, which you should, that probably should be close, because that's, that is a.
We don't, we don't own that land either.
We don't own it, it's four thousand dollars a year.
Your tipping station is gonna receive the, the garbage trucks from the town. And then any convenience center that's not compact. And then anything that's compacting can go on, go.
But how many tons come out of a compacted?
Eight. We are one of the best, tell me if I'm wrong, we are one of the best at hauling breaks right now, eight tons on that, can carry up to eight tons, and I think the average on one of those, uh, surveys I did were eight tons.
If, 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 eight tons is good, but eight tons ain't no sin I love.
No, he's talking twenty one and twenty three.
I was like twenty five, what was it, twenty seven?
Usually twenty twenty two.
Okay, so you're eight tons sixteen, so you can't quite get three of them.
That's right.
Twenty four. But you could sure enough get two, so could you got the ability to put one of them to the side, wait till another one gets compacted, then load both of them and some freight on over that?
Yeah.
You can do that? You have to carry a piece of equipment away to load it with.
Yeah. Yeah. But we already got equipment on it, actually. I think you probably read everything correctly. With the equipment that we would need for the tipping station, it's less than the contracts that we currently have with Carter and them for the leasing equipment.
That's left.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. So it's a money saver.
So is there a way, Steve, someone with landfill can maybe give us some kind of projected cost savings with what?
That, that's what we're gonna look at in phase two. And part of what we wanna discuss tonight, what you want us to focus on in phase two, but those are the kind of questions we're gonna try to answer, is look at the difference, different costs.
Well, well, as you know, op, option two is not an option.
Right.
Alright, so I would just say, what are the costs, day to day right now, what would be the cost? And I would say, if we could use current figures, cause we wanna be accurate with that, use current figures of day to day operations, what, what a transfer station. Okay, then like you said, I understand you talking about these contracts can go five years or 10 years on their first round.
Right.
You can also budget with expectations from the consultants as to where is the current new contracts that are being renewed, so we can work that into the budget, when we negotiate the next hauling contract, whether it's five years, 10 years, damn.
I'm gonna go back to the numbers again.
Yes.
Eight tons, eight tons, you're talking about, that's the masher that we have now?
Yes.
So the, the, the other drawback is if you decide not to use all your landfill space, that is an asset that you have.
Right.
So you're giving up that asset. I mean, it's how real is that?
And how, and how many years is that asset, just says there, permitted, their last sale, right?
Yes.
And how many years that would be?
Uh, it's a little bit over eight years.
And you don't think a private contractor, nobody would want four?
I don't think so. I think it's too short a time. We, we, as part of this next phase, we could put some feelers out there and see. But from what we're seeing, they're looking, they're much more interested in, in the long return value. And they don't wanna be tied to the unpredictability of permitting. Because they don't guarantee.
A whole lot of that if they lease it from, or rather bought it from.
That's true.
And if they only wanna have it a shorter period of time, they should look into wanting to lease it from us versus owning it anyway, right?
Right, but what they're, they are probably gonna, I would almost guarantee, you gotta, you'll still be on the hook for those post closure care costs. So you'd still be setting aside all that money. But they'd be making money from their lease agreement.
Yeah, just like the trucking business. If they don't lease it and make money, they're not as well keeping on.
Right.
Well, um, alright, so timeframe, alright, because one of the initial things that I had looked into said that a transfer station could be vault, I mean built, within a year's time, you know, from the start of construction to finish. Also, uh, a transfer station should be built, so you can expand it if you decide you wanna go into recycling. Recycling comes down as a requirement from the state federal government. Then the costs associated with it, I was also told that, well, now it's even jumped more, so it's gotta be even more accurate now. That a transfer station could be built cheaper than what you go open the last sale for.
Oh, I'd say, just, I'd say a whole lot cheaper.
Yeah, but now, see, see the jump.
And building, and the county should own this load rather than rent it.
I agree, yeah. So I guess, then my next question was, for your next phase then, how soon can we get that? I mean, we're looking at, we need to save money 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're probably looking at four to six months to get the next phase, phase two report done. We'll, we will absolutely do it as quickly as we can.
Can we do it now? And look, I'll tell, I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why. I would love, love to give these citizens some great Christmas gift of a foresight in the future. I mean, it'd be August, September, October.
Yeah.
That'd be a great Christmas gift for them, for the citizens, if we could get something nailed down, re-presented, that'd be one.
Citizens looking at it like this, you take that trash, they don't get paid no, uh, charge no more. You happy?
Yeah, right.
So if, they getting that trash taken the way we carrying it out right today?
So we're also taking money out of the general fund.
Depleting their, depleting their stock.
Which then makes us have to do other things that they don't.
That's exactly right.
To say that, how much we figured out a year? They put tipping station in one, 1.3?
Yeah. So it's over one million dollars. Yeah, but, but then you have to start thinking, go, go look at the other piece of land. At the current rates, 3.3 million dollars to develop each cell, and I think it said at one time, it's like 14 cells could be built on 12 to 14. But that's at today's price, today's price. You'd almost be better off to open a whole damn thing there and dump and cover, instead of doing these, uh.
Say, I agree.
You know, I, I, but still, you're talking about. How much money? You think a courthouse complex?
We got, we got 80 acres out there this.
I looked at this, 86, 86 acres.
So here you've created a landfill, we've got 86 acres beside it. Is there any marketability in the trash business for that?
Yes. It would be very marketable if you already had a permit on some of that. But the fact that you own the property, so if a private company was interested in purchasing the landfill and paying to permit an expansion, you have the property, so they come in knowing that they can do.
You do have, and, and.
But again, the feedback that we've gotten is, they want the permit and taken care of before they come in to take possession.
Yeah, you, um, but you're also looking at a creek on that property. Which is a major hurdle.
And that slows the whole process down, and that's why a private waste company is never gonna buy it, wants that permit and all.
Once it all done, so they can, they can do the simple math, and say, we'll get this many tons a day.
And, and once you involve a core of engineers for wetlands or streams, you know, it's anybody's guess whether the permit goes here.
So we own, we own 80 acres beside a landfill.
That's what I'm saying, that's turning into a park.
We have a desirable.
Yeah.
I'd agree with John. I mean, we've been pushed from communities to parts of recreation that isn't available for, and it's pretty good location.
It, it's not built like Mount Trash Mall, it's right beside it, so it's safe. But hey, can, can I ask you, and, and I don't want you, I feel like I'm putting y'all on the hook for this. But in y'all's experience right now, and I know we've got facts of that, and it'll come to us from phase two, that, do y'all feel like it makes more sense for this county in this situation to be expecting to go to a transfer station?
Based on the volume of trash.
I figured somebody was gonna ask that question. And, and I'll be honest with you, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
Because there are pluses and minuses.
You don't know what this city is future in.
Exactly, exactly. And even though you're running the landfill at a deficit now, you still have some control over your costs. With a transfer station, you give up a lot of that.
I understand. In 10 years, they say, that rate we gave you was a five, I'm like, come on. We charged you 16 dollars a ton, but we, we got, we, we got up to 76 thousand a ton. At that point, they got you by it off.
But a transfer station relieves you of a lot of headaches.
Right, so that's what I was saying.
Save a lot up now, money right now.
Right, well, if you stop thinking about today's rate, and just do it easy, just do it, uh, figure it at 10, cause it's John math, I can figure it easy. The cost that you're not seeing is 10 sales is 33 million dollars at today's rate if we stay into it. That's not budgeted.
So we can go for a whole lot in 10 years, we still save money.
You're right.
Or you could put that contract that it can't go up with a certain percentage for in 10 years. And we gotta do, it's gotta be due for another 10, if they can't go up over 17% or 27% or whatever number you figure, then they can't go over that, as long as they still busy.
So they'll answer that question, y'all will get those answers to that.
Yeah, we, we will. And, and in all seriousness, I would say that the trend over the last 50 years has been counties of this size to move away from landfill and towards transport. Some have regretted it, I mean Bedford County's thinking about reopening their landfill. Others, uh, live with it, but they charge their residents for trash disposal, so as those tipping fees go up, that the landfill that you're taking it to, or the fuel costs go up, the residents are paying more to get rid of their trash.
But one of those ways to offset that is if we own the trucks, we have the drivers. That fuel cost is ours. We're paying exact cost, not profit, not markup.
We still got fuel costs like you're right there now, you. So that, leasing that equipment comes with equipment, not with the fuel. In fact, it's straight truckload of fuel, but you know, whatever, often I'll say.
Yeah.
But if we use more fuel, and this is my background working for a fuel company, we get a better walk rate if you put our own tank out there.
Yeah.
We should get a better price.
Well, that's what I'm saying, though. I, I feel like the more, more we own, the more, I mean, we have potential to create a few more jobs. You know, it's that some people are looking at this and saying, well, you will close, even if we close, cause two of the, actually, two of the convenience centers probably should be closed. By the lack of weight that's going on out there. And I think, I think I originally saw that in that report before, but even if you do that, you got enough for, most of these guys are retired gentlemen that are working out there anyway, they don't wanna hold out, but you still can create a few jobs instead of getting rid of people.
Oh, yeah, I agree. In 10 years, you're talking about fuel damage, it might be, uh, electric, or a tractor.
Oh, we might be using drummers.
Is there, would, would our landfill generate methane?
Yes.
Yeah, we have enough.
Probably not enough to generate renewable natural gas or, or like, it would not be worth, the infrastructure costs would be too much to get.
Well, can, can I, can I ask you something? We are, we're getting ready to go into closed session, if, if, we got anything we want to talk. Gentlemen mind hanging around here while, uh, while we're doing a closed session?
Sure.
Alright, now was there anything, cause guys, what time is it? Right, so can we, uh?
Should take like 10 minutes on closed session.
Okay, alright, so if y'all ready to do that, cause I, like I said, we could, we got a million questions, I'm sure we could all sit in and ask, and they.
And one, one of here knows, you, for phase two, you want us to look in more detail at the transfer station and where.
Yes. Yeah, well, and, and I guess if, if we could, have like the current operational costs, so, even though you, I know you'll be using those transfer costs off of, but projected costs as well, five years, 10 years out, that'd be great.
And that'll have a per ton cost?
Yes.
We can bury apples and apples.
Correct.
For 89 dollars.
Yes, that's right.
And then, and then too, one of the things we have to keep in mind with that is that the actual cost for developing the sales from year to year to year to year.
Yes.
Yeah, because that's a, one of those hidden costs that is just not budgeted for what you end up doing. So, alright, well, alright, we will go ahead and get ready to go into closed session. Yes, they don't say anything.
I move that the Board of Supervisors, Notaway County, Virginia is adjourned into closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia, 2.2 dash 3711A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating these facilities in the community, specifically regarding a new business in the county. That's my motion.
Alright, now before I ask for a second, uh, Mr. Easter, would you say as well?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, can I get a second for that?
Absolutely.
Alright, um, we're now gonna go into closed session, so. Yes, yes, we need to cut down on.
Yeah, we need to kill the vibe. Is this something that we can put on?